On the next business item, which is 14C on the agenda. And it's a request for rehearing of council-related, a council decision related to second step of Mayor Patterson's two-step process request to discuss adopting an industrial safety ordinance. I just have a couple of process questions for clarification. First would be a staff report. Secondly, we have, I've been told, we have an actual organized opposition. The question to the proponents, would you like to go first or would you like the opposition to go first? Mr. Malacca?
I think we'll go first.
Okay, so the advocates will go first and the opposition, organized opposition. And to be clear, I will recognize organized opposition because they represent an organization and all individuals will be able to speak after the two organized entities speak. Unless there are other organizations that are here tonight that are speaking on this item. So, to be clear, the first thing we have will be the staff report.
So, this one's a rehearing request, reconsideration, lots of R words, but to boil it down, under the council's rules, this is a reconsideration of a policy item. And as a reconsideration of a policy item considered in the previous year, it essentially is a two-step process where the council first, here's the item and decides whether they want to invest more staff time in it. And if they do, then it proceeds to step two and then we go through the process. So, tonight is the first step.
Is that the staff report?
That's the brief version of the staff report.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Okay. So, let me open it up since it's my request and clarification?
Just wanted to do the ex parte thing or do you want to do that later?
Well, we can do it now. That makes sense. You want to start?
Oh, sure. I talked to Don Wilson on a phone call. I've had several emails with AirWatch and the, also the Bay Area Regional Air Quality District and Bob Berman.
Okay. Councilmember Swartzman?
I had a phone conversation with Don Wilson, an in-person conversation with Paul and another representative of Valero. And that's it.
Vice Mayor Young?
And I had a meeting with Eric, what's his last name?
Stevenson.
Stevenson, the representative from the air district concerning air monitors.
And Councilmember Hughes?
Yeah, so I had a brief discussion with Don Wilson and also with Paul from Valero.
So, I'm working with the Industrial Safety Ordinance Group and then I also attended the meeting with Eric Stevenson from the Bay Area Air Quality Management Board. So, I have three points to make. The first is the process. The second is what the council action on June 19th didn't, does not do. And three is the original request at the June 19th meeting that actually had, was not addressed by staff. For the process, it's unclear to me how staff handles the public, including Valero and others, when there is a two-step process. And this is the original two-step process when I make an agenda request or another council member makes a general request. It is clear to me that we have three choices tonight. One is to deny the reconsideration. Two is to approve reconsideration for the staff recommendation of October 2nd and consider the request to have the draft industrial safety ordinance reviewed. And I have provided the nature of that review, which I will get into later. The third choice is approve reconsideration and agendize for the July 24th meeting pursuant to Benicia Municipal Code, Section 1.44.050. And it reads that if the person or body concludes the applicant has met the burden of justifying the rehearing, the rehearing will be scheduled for the next regular meeting, which allows sufficient time for the giving of notice as required by Benicia Municipal Code 1.44.090. So, the approval for reconsideration is seeking council direction to staff to have the draft industrial safety ordinance reviewed. That was the request that was not addressed on June 19th. No need to consider adopting the draft. It's just, let's have a third-party expert in the subject area with public interest, experience and knowledge and record and legal sufficiency review. My second point is, and Terry Malacca, our pro bono attorney, will expand on this, is what the council action and motion does not do, and this is the June 19th. It does not and will not tell us what we are breathing. The fence line monitors that you will hear about later are measuring about 93% of the time the air that, the wind that's blowing eastward. And it's not measuring what those of us who live here and work here are breathing. So, the question is then, do you want to have, to know our ambient air where we live and work? The motion that was passed does not provide funds to support staff's engagement. That was really a critical part of drafting the industrial safety ordinance based on our experience that we had in interviewing and talking to many folks in Contra Costa County. That is how they are able to provide the information to the public is through those fees. The motion does not tell parents, workers and residents what to do with children at school, what to do with workers at work when there's a shelter in place. And COOPA does not provide for public engagement. That's the county coordinating group for hazardous materials. And lastly, but not the only reason, because it's a big ordinance, it has a lot of components. The action does not address the county and our needs to have information and to participate with the county. Again, the fees pay for that. Now, all of this can be reviewed by somebody who has the knowledge and experience. And trust me, there are many firms, particularly in the Bay Area, with exactly that expertise. All of these emissions are part of the draft industrial safety ordinance. They were included. A review of the industrial safety ordinance would reveal that. The review of the industrial safety ordinance would also clarify that all relevant state and county regulations are incorporated by reference. There is no difference in the draft industrial safety ordinance for Cal EPA Program 4 and the county, Solano County's COOPA Program 4, which was mentioned on June 19th. It's, they're one and the same. Again, same thing with Cal OSHA. So, I am asking for reconsideration for review of the draft industrial safety ordinance, not for adoption, not for revision, just a review and a report back to the council so that we all will be on the same page when it comes to the multiple questions that have been raised about what it does and does not do. I'm going to ask Terry as the representative for the proponents to have his 15 minutes. And then, I don't know from Valero who wants to speak on behalf of Valero. You can have multiple speakers within that 15 minutes, so however you want to do that. I have not been asked by you, so I was just informed by staff that that was your request. Okay, Terry?
Thank you. Good evening, council members, staff and fellow Benetians. My name is Terry Malacca. I'm a member of the community and I'm here to speak on behalf of the members of the Industrial Safety Ordinance Working Group. My purpose here tonight is to speak in favor of item 14C on the agenda, reconsideration and rehearing. The city can reconsider and commence to study the proposed industrial safety ordinance, evaluate the need for air quality monitoring, monitoring and retain qualified expert to advise about air monitoring systems and independently determine whether the risks of flaring due to loss of power have been adequately mitigated. And that's what I would encourage you all to consider doing tonight. The June 19th vote delayed action for six months on a proposed ISO with some conditions and stipulations that seem promising, including interest in fence line monitors and community monitors being put in place and potentially negotiations with Valero over those monitor systems. But they did not authorize the staff to do any work or prepare or engage any experts or do any of the homework necessary to enable the city council to actually take action in November if the status quo remains the same. And so, by reconsidering now and authorizing a rehearing on this matter, the city council can begin the process of understanding the complex set of circumstances and legal requirements to actually be in a position to take action at the appropriate time. Doesn't necessarily mean you're going to adopt an industrial safety ordinance now, but it does mean that you do the preparatory work so that when the time comes, you're prepared to do so. Not taking action on the reconsideration will just be kicking the can down the road. And six months from now, you'll begin the process that you can commence tonight and I urge you to take action now so you're better prepared. One of the reasons why this issue needs study is that there are some complex and overlapping legal requirements, including what we've talked about last time, the Program 4, the state regulations, the California Accidental Release and Prevention Program, known as Cal ARP, and process safety management, which I refer to as PSM, which is part of the state regulations. These are systems that have been put in place that are designed to call for evaluations, internal evaluations at the refinery to determine whether best practices are being used to handle and protect against accidental releases or emissions of hazardous materials. The objective is to encourage the refinery to adopt best practices. Now, I have a great deal of respect for Valero. They have a reputation for being a good operator. And we would like to see them partner with the community because they are engaged in a business that does require the handling and emission of hazardous materials. But there are some practices at Valero that weren't review and evaluation by the city council. For example, we all know that now, as a result of the May 5th, 2017 situation, the incident, that there was flaring at the refinery and that a substantial amount of highly toxic chemicals was released onto the community as a result. And we also know from that experience that flaring is the process, it's the fail-safe process for the refinery in the event of an interruption of power supply. It's, instead of having an alternative power supply to keep the refinery operating under interruption of power circumstances, it uses flaring to release chemicals to make the refinery safe for the workers that work there, but not so safe for the community. Power failures are a fact of life and foreseeable in this community. We know that this is a risk, that this can happen again. So, what steps should be taken to mitigate that issue? And has it been adequately mitigated already? I understand Valero has taken the position they've already mitigated that problem, but that's an issue, a technical and legal issue that you all have to study and understand. And I encourage you to have expert advice so you can independently determine whether that is, whether that is true. We talked about California Health and Safety Code, Section 25500 last time, and I pointed out to you all that the law enables the community to have more stringent standards than state and federal regulations require. I think it is important and incumbent on the city council to fully understand what the risks are and how to mitigate those risks and how to reduce the exposure of the community to hazardous toxic materials. But without an industrial safety ordinance, Benicia will continue to have no seat at the table. They'll have no participation in the process. They may not even be fully informed. And of course, as Mayor Patterson indicated, without the fees associated with an industrial safety ordinance, you simply won't have the capacity to pay for the work that needs to be done to understand this process. That is a flaw in the system that results in you not having the tools to make informed decisions. Now, one has to ask, you know, there was a lot of talk last time about Program 4 and how that's going to solve all the problems, but you know, Program 3 was in existence for a long time. And in fact, Cal ARP was implemented in January of 1997. And at that time, the Solano County Unified Program Agency, or the COOPA, was in place of enforcement of those laws. So, one has to ask, why did that process not already result in revealing this potential flaw and this potential risk to the community of flaring as the fail-safe system? That is something that the council needs to answer. COOPA is a benefit to Benicia, but it does not take care of everything. There is no program under COOPA for the enforcement of air quality monitoring programs or the settlement agreements that I'll talk about in a bit. And the COOPA doesn't, cannot adopt more stringent standards as are authorized by state law. There is no participation by Benicia in the process or activities involved in COOPA's enforcement, voluntary perhaps, but you know, you're not informed of the process. And one has to ask, what action has the COOPA taken to respond to the situation that existed on May 5th, 2017? Have you been informed of what actions they have taken? And have you determined whether those actions were adequate? The other problem is, under Program 4 and state regulations, it will take literally years for the PSM process to be implemented. And even then, the lack of a backup power supply may not be addressed by the program. So, more stringent standards would allow the city to determine for itself whether there's something more that needs to be done to protect the citizenry, which is after all, most directly affected by the operations of the refinery. Subject of air monitors came up at the last hearing and there was some discussion about fence line monitors versus community monitors. I don't want to rehash all of that, but I do want to say that industrial safety ordinance is important because it does provide for a program of air monitoring that is set for the community. All anticipated monitoring that will take place under the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMED, and as well as the Cal EPA monitor, community monitors that will be put in place are not sufficient. And this is something that the council needs to be educated about and advised by an independent expert. History shows that affirmative action must be taken to ensure the implementation of the highest standards of safety. And community leaders have been trying to get air monitoring programs in place since the year 2000. Last time I was here, I mentioned that there were three settlements, one in June of 2003, one in July of 2008, and one of May of 2010. And yet, and all of those settlements called for the implementation of air monitoring programs and some air monitoring equipment was actually purchased. But as of yet, we still do not have air quality monitors in place. And I might add that those settlements were part of the condition of the use permit that was issued to Valero. So, the city has some measure of control over the enforcement of this issue. One of the things that I have learned through this process is that fence line monitors alone will not be adequate. Fence line monitors, according to Eric Stevenson of BACMED, really only detect whether there are leaks on the plant, within the plant. The fence line monitors only determine the existence of toxic soup, the four chemicals that comprise toxic soup, only .1 to 1.3% of the time, whereas community monitors detect toxic soup 25.5% to 28.5% of the time. So, clearly, fence line monitors don't serve the purpose of protecting the community against toxic releases. And they wouldn't be effective with regard to flaring because fence line monitors are low to the ground, whereas flaring occurs high up in the sky and the toxic chemicals drift over the fence line monitors. So, that much we know. We are due eventually to get a single community monitor from BACMED, but that process will likely take six years or more. And it will be a single community monitor, not an array of monitors, that will only be placed in one location in the community. Where that location is going to be is going to be an issue that I'm sure will be hotly contested because every member of the community would like to ensure that their locale is protected. We've also learned that BACMED acknowledges that the best way to deal with incidents or emergency releases of toxics is through mobile monitors. So, it may be that the city of Benicia's ultimate decision is a combination of fence line, community and mobile monitors. But you won't know that unless you retain the experts necessary to evaluate that for yourself. So, in summary, I encourage you to reconsider the vote on this matter. The city council should reconsider this and begin the process of studying the facts and laws and issues so that it can be prepared to take action when the time comes. Given the 15-year-long history of implementation or lack of implementation of air monitors, further delay is not warranted. I would also like to say that there are many people in the community who understand these issues very well, many of them better than I, and they can be resources. So, you know, we would like to see the city council move in a direction so that it's prepared to make a decision at the appropriate time. And if a memorandum of understanding or some kind of agreement ultimately gets reached, it will only occur if you educate yourself and have the expertise to be able to make that kind of a decision. So, with that, I'll submit the rest of my time.
I think we have a question from Vice Mayor Young and also Councilmember Campbell.
My question is about the statistic you mentioned about fence line monitors being only effective 1% of the time as opposed to community monitors effective only 20 or 25% of the time.
Right.
What's your source for that?
That was, that source of that is for BACMED. We got that information from.
So, the air district itself says that fence line monitors are of minimal value, it sounds like, for the purposes of measuring toxics in the community.
Yes, as Mr. Stevenson explained, if all you're trying to do is detect leaks, then the placement of the monitors is less important. Eventually, the wind is going to blow in the direction of the monitor, you'll find the leak. But of course, that's only for the purpose of dealing with leaks within the plant. It doesn't deal with routine admissions, emissions or emergency emissions at all.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, that's a good a place to start as any. I looked at the AirWatch, which I think is where those numbers came from. It sure looks like it since you're repeating them. And this is the problem I have with that. The woman that gave the presentation said she was using Rodeo is where they were from there. And she said, "The fence line monitors," he described it, "are very old. The community monitors are new." Okay, right there, you've just lost that whole, you know, study. It just went out the window because one of the basic things you have to have in any sort of scientific method approach is you have to remove the variables, one of which is you can't have old air monitors compared with new air monitors. And they were both being used to, for example, look at the amount of benzene in the air, which was, almost always was one part per billion. And she even said, you know, "The trouble with fence line monitors around Rodeo, they're just too old. We aren't going to put in old monitors, we're going to put in, you know, new monitors." So, right off the bat, you know, what's going on there?
Oh, I can't answer that question. I don't think the data is based on those specific monitors being used in Rodeo. I think that's a general limitation of fence line monitors that occurs from the fact that where they're located and what they're designed to detect and the wind and other factors, topographical factors. I mean, there's a lot of effort that has to go into the location of monitors to make them the most effective. A lot of scientific study has to go meteorol, meteorological data as well. But I can't answer the question of why the responsiveness of the monitors is so poor. I just don't think that's their function. Their function is to detect leaks. At least that's according to Eric Stevenson of BACMED.
Okay, we'll move on from that one then, because I actually sort of agree with you. Monitors are the key to this whole thing. Everything's going to spin around monitors being able to detect, you know, what's in the air. And for me, you know, what an ISO in Benicia would do would be to fill holes that, for example, the state's ISO does. Because, you know, I mean, you look at it and you think, well, okay, whose idea was this? It was Governor Brown and, you know, this is the state of California. We aren't talking about the state of New Jersey or something doing an ISO. I mean, you know, this is arguably the best government and the best politician for environmental awareness, not just in the states, but maybe in the entire planet right now. So, you know, so this is not going to be a pretty slack, you know, job. It's going to be, first of all, I think, done pretty well. So, that being the case, it's not so much, I'm worried about redundancies, as much as even that will have some holes that need to be filled. If you've got air monitors in play, you can see, you know, better what that will produce when you have like, say, a year's worth of data. So, the question I have really, I'm getting around to, is I was looking at, you know, the timeline for when, under the Benicia ISO, you actually would be putting in air monitors. And I was using the date of August 21st because we aren't meeting on August 7th, but the mayor wants to go to July 24th, which is fine with me, you know, as far as that goes. But, tell me where I'm wrong here. You're going to send it out to staff to look at for three months. Then, according to page six in your ISO, you're going to take six months, you know, after that for their due. And then, with all resolutions, you have a first reading, a second reading. So, you've moved out nine and a half months from July 24th. And so, the Air Board, which just, the vice mayor just sent something saying they have the strictest regulations in the nation to limit emissions of cancer-causing toxic air contaminants. Another point in that, you know, this is being looked at by other sources pretty hard, you know. But at least, tell me where I'm wrong. You know, under your strategy, it's nine and a half months down the road. That puts us sometime now in July using, July of 2019 if we're using July 24th, 2018. And, you know, the air district has said, "You got to have them in one year after the air monitoring plan was okay." And that means that they're going in, no matter what anyone does, by June 8th, 2019. So, that's not kicking the can anywhere down the road. You've got a date where it has to be in.
I think you're referring to the BACMED monitors?
Yes.
The ones that are, the plan appro, so those are fence line monitors, to be clear?
Yeah, I know. Yeah. We'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
All right. So, anyway, so this is what worries me about your plan. You know, your plan is awful close to the district's plan, when you actually going to put the monitors in, which is why I want to put them in, you know, the end of November or December, because you aren't going to be able to do anything unless you actually have data coming in that you can analyze. And you need monitors to do that. So, where am I wrong in, you know, this, this idea that, you know, you're against, you know, doing something with the monitors starting in November or December, having them physically there? Because under your plan, it looks like you're going to be butting up against the regional air district's timeline anyway.
Well, we're talking about different things. The draft industrial safety ordinance calls for community monitors as well. The draft industrial safety ordinance calls for community monitors as well as fence line monitors, a comprehensive system that would call for an array of monitors, more, multiple community monitors as well. So that system is going to take some time to be developed and be implemented. If we were passing the industrial safety ordinance today, you're right, that would be the timeline that we've allowed under the ordinance. Of course, the city council could decide that they want a shorter timeline if they wanted to amend the ordinance. But that's not why I'm here today. What I'm here today to do is encourage reconsideration and the study of the issues so that, as I understand the vote on June 19, basically, we said, "We'll wait and see what happens until November." And then in November, if there isn't, there aren't adequate monitors in place, then we're going to go ahead and pass the ISO. So, you know, I support the idea of starting the process now, of studying it, to understand what kind of a monitor system that you, the city, should have to best protect this community. And so that it come November, you're in position to actually act on it.
You're good at leading me into, you know, the next question. Because this is, okay, this is the last one, and I'll stop for a while. You know, the, I read the air monitoring plan, and I also read a lot of other stuff on Regulation 12, Rule 15, and the changes that occurred in 2016. And I talked to them, got some emails from them. And so one of the things they did was the air, the Bay Area Air District, you know, it sounds like due to the comments they got, they said, "Well, we aren't going to let refineries site them. We're going to site the places that we are going to put these air monitors." And so that being the case, you know, again, that's roughly Page Six also, you know, you said you're going to follow the rules of the air district, which means you aren't going to have any say in where these sites are sited. The air district has said, you know, "If you put in air monitors, you know, we're going to site where they go." And that's why they, they did all those meteorological studies and put them on the fence line. And also, you know, which seems to be being forgotten, they put them on the southeast part of the refinery, so that they catch the winds roughly 93% of the time. And also, what has been mentioned was in that meteorological study, some of the time, it doesn't matter what monitor you put in, it won't work because the truly fog comes in. And those happen to come in right about the same time and stay put right about the same time as that 7% that you can't get. So, you know, no monitor is going to work, whether it's on the west side, east side, north side, during that particular stretch of time.
So let me make a suggestion. Benjamin, Mayor Montes, could you stand up, please? This is the intern that's been working on this since last summer. And he's the one who did the research and did the comparison of the tables between Callosia and Calipia. We interviewed Randy Sawyer in Contra Costa County, and then we worked out some of the draft language. He is back from school and is picking up where he left off last year and was able to, while I was out doing something else, he was able to interview Eric Stevenson after the meeting that we had here at the city, where Mr. Stevenson went through details that Terry has been talking about in terms of the process. And so what Benjamin confirmed is that the process that the air district has for approving the, not only the location, but also the type of fence line monitoring that is part of the Valero plan that was approved by the air district, is easily a six-month process just to get to the approval of the equipment. In other words, the monitors will not be in the ground or on the ground, or seven feet above the ground, or 15 feet above the ground by November. So what is the criteria for determining that the requirements for these fence line monitors that are monitoring the air that is blowing eastward for us to make a decision? The point about the rehearing is for us to kickstart the process of then engage, of looking at, at what point can the city participate if we were to have a review of the industrial safety ordinance? Where do we fit in? We won't have that by November, but we'll have a more clear picture. That, what Eric Stevenson also said is that he would, if he could, he would rely on properties that the city has, because it makes it a whole lot easier to locate an air monitor. So there's going to be some engagement by the city, but it won't be informed engagement because we don't have the expertise to the extent that you need for air monitoring. This is no disparaging of our staff, who I really admire and appreciate for all the work they're doing. But it's a reality. It's a test of reality. Furthermore, Benjamin went on to talk about.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
With Eric Stevenson.
Hi, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm talking, I didn't interrupt you.
No, that's just exactly the point I'm going to make here. You know, you've decided to follow the council's rules of procedure, which is fine, I'm really happy with that. Only thing is, I wasn't done talking, and you decided to interrupt me, which is clearly on Page 14 listed, and your name, Mayor, is at the very end of it, that you will not interrupt a council member when they have the floor. And you've done exactly that, right? You know, if you want to, if you want to, at some point in the future, and I'm more than happy that you do that, give a rebuttal, that's fine. However, what you've done now is you've totally gone off another tangent, clouded the whole issue, and, you know, prevented me from finishing what I was going to do.
Why don't you finish?
At this stage of the game, you have just totally muddled the whole thing. So I would just as soon hear from the intern as far as, you know, the question I had on the Air Board, but if you want to answer it, fine. Because the question, again, was the Air Board says they will do the sighting, you know, you will not be able to do the sighting if you go along with the Air Board. And I talked to them about that. And what they said also was, if Benicia wants to do the community monitoring, first of all, you know, we don't do, meaning the Air Board does not do it, they took that out. That was, I think, Regulation 12, Rule 15.
Right.
Sub Rule 240. They just said they weren't going to do that anymore. So they told me if Benicia wants to do community air monitoring, they're on their own to do that. So.
Let me try to answer, there's multiple issues there, but in the comments to that rule, it was changed to take out a requirement for community monitors. So it only requires fence line monitors. Nevertheless, CalEPA has required the COOPA, I'm sorry, the Air Resources Board, to put in one community monitor located somewhere in the community, which they will operate, and it's part of their operational budget to maintain that. The question, I think, for the city council is, is that enough? Or as is done in Phillips 66 in Rodeo, maybe you need an array of community monitors that are located throughout the area. For example, I live in Waters End, and Waters End is part of the 7% that you mentioned. The wind blows 93% of the time, either blows east or west, but it doesn't blow to Waters End. And so for that reason, it's carved completely out of any analysis ever done, even though it's acknowledged that 7% of the time, the wind is going to go that direction, okay? That's not much comfort for me if the wind happens to be blowing that direction on a day when there's emissions. So it may be that the city comes up with a plan for community monitors that go beyond what the state is going to build. And that's something you should consider, because some cities are doing that. And you need expert advice on how to do that. You need to bring in qualified experts that can help you design a plan that will protect all of the city, not just the people who live in the direction where the wind blows, you know, 50% of the time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes perfect sense. That, and, you know, that's where, you know, collateral agreement with Valero would be nice to put in, because around the Rodeo refinery, there are something like 17 community monitors. You know, don't know if we need that many, but, you know, there are holes, like I said, that need to be filled after, you know, the data's in there by, by a Benicia ISO.
And that's a question that can be fairly answered for the city council with the retention of an expert, which you can only do if you agree to reconsider this motion, this ordinance.
Okay, are there any other questions of Mr. Malika? Point of order?
Point of order, it's Richmond and Chevron, not Phillips 66.
You're ready? I stand corrected.
Councilmember Campbell, your light's on, I don't want to interrupt you.
It's on yours.
Okay, no more questions.